Is enough. I don't think we've ever done a four-person meeting in recent memory. I know Desiree is in Canada, so she's not coming. Mike said that he might, and Tom is usually reliable, but it'll be in a second. Either way, four's enough. Let's play.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:01. Let me call to order the Mayor Mac Planning Board meeting for January 3rd. Let me remind everyone who will speak and address the board to sign in on the clipboard. Speak clearly in the microphones, which seem to be working really well tonight. It's loud hearing my voice. Let me appoint Nelson as an alternate to voting position in for any of the others that aren't here, whether it's Lynn or Desiree. Desiree, I know, won't show up, so we'll call it Desiree. With that, let me, by way of announcement, share that our next planning board meeting will be January 17th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. And I don't have any other announcements immediately, although some for later. And with that, it brings us to the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report.
Nothing tonight, Robert.
Are there any questions by members of the board for staff?
One, Mr. Chairman. I noticed there's a new house going up on, it's on where Natty Cook Road and Camp Sergeant Road meet. It's right on the waterfront. I'm surprised because the lot size seems very small. I don't know if it was previously a different lot, but I think it's 175 Camp Sergeant. It's where, it's the funny little triangle, where's a little triangle there. A new house is going up. It may be the lot was always undersized, but was, because it was pre, whenever it got away with it. But I noticed it's going up, and I just wondered if it was okay.
I'm not aware of it. I'll research it for you.
Thank you.
My own observation, I think if I'm thinking about the same building, is that they tore down the thing that was there, and their building in its own footprint, so...
Well, it looks rather different footprint. It might be right, sir.
May well be. I sort of wasn't paying all that much attention to the old building before it went down, but certainly know that that's a lot of times the strategy in a property when you acquire it there is to try and do something new and...
Bigger and better.
But if you do look into that, that'd be great. Any other comments or questions by members of the board for staff?
Seeing now, item three on our agenda is Skipper's Marine Corp. As the applicant and owner, continued review for consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to amend a previously approved outdoor boat display and storage. The parcels located at 54 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Oxford Conservation Districts, tax map 2D, Lot 29. The agenda item has been continued from our November 1st and December 6th meeting. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before you hear from Skip?
The last time you actually met with the applicant, the board had requested that he meet with the Fire Marshal, John Manuelli, to work out the issues that have been ongoing between himself and the Fire Department. That discussion took place today, and the applicants provided an email, which you have printed out in front of you, outlining all of the issues that are going on that the Fire Department's concerned about, and that he has kind of, his plan to address them. I talked with John Manuelli this afternoon, and he does say that the email that was provided does address his concerns. So staff's recommendation is to get those items noted on the plan before the board grants any conditional approval. But there's also in the cheat sheet that I provided you, there's some other notes that we've kind of accumulated throughout the process for this application. Just staff's recommendation is to get all of those noted on the plan. Have it come in one last time, take a look at it, and then grant the conditional approval after that.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Skip?
Take a second to do that, settle in, and then, even though we've seen you a couple of times already, don't forget to actually introduce yourself again for the record. Touch the button on the microphone. Yeah. Did it get a lot brighter? You don't have to hold it, just touch it once.
Hi, my name is Skip Moyer of Levin Loop Road, and I'm here to represent Skip's Marine.
Okay. You can stand if you want to, but you don't have to.
I'll sit. Sitting at the Bedford basketball game for the last few minutes.
Skip, keep the mic close to you.
Testing one, two, three.
Sounds good. So where are we at with this?
Met with John, and basically, you know, keeping the circle open during non-working hours, you know, after hours when no one's there to move anything is important to him. Keeping the alleyway on the north side of the building, keeping that open at night is important to him. And what we decided is that we would lock the gate at night, so that no one can just pull in there and drop a boat off in an inappropriate area, because those are attractive areas, especially along the side of the building, to drop something. So we're going to put a key box on the gate, so that they can access, you know, their way in there if they need to. And that was basically the crux of the discussion, was to keep the circle open and keep the right-hand side alleyway clear. And that was basically it. And he asked me to put that in writing, which I did. Sent it off to him after a meeting face-to-face, and that's about it.
Sounds like a good start. Thank you for doing that and meeting with him and following up with that stuff. So I have some questions about what he asked of you and what you've agreed to do. So you mentioned that the circle and the alleyway on the right side of the building would be kept clear, and I think you mentioned after-hours. Is that his understanding too, is that it's after-hours, and he doesn't mind if you have trucks and things moving around during the day, or...
He said he understands that there's activity during the day, and there may be moments where something has to be temporarily parked someplace, but he would prefer that, best effort to always keep the circle and the alleyway clear enough to get a vehicle in there or equipment in the case of an emergency.
Makes sense. When you talk about the circle, when we looked at it before, there was an overhead photograph as well as a diagram, and I know you're doing what boats on trailers that are a little bit bigger than cars that were, the spaces were designed for. So did you guys talk about really what does it mean for it to be clear? I mean, how many feet of width or clearance, or...
He said enough so that the fire truck could get around, and the UPS truck comes in there every day and gets around the circle without issue. It was designed originally by my dad to allow a tractor-trailer truck to drive around that circle. I mean, it's one of those situations, and until you do it, you don't realize that you do actually have room to get around there.
I have no doubt that the layout of the pavement is wide enough, but I just don't, with all of the boats present that you have there, whether that's... And I take your word for it if you say that there's enough room there, but I think that in terms of us deciding to take some action, somehow, your sense and Captain Manuelli's sense of what enough is, has to be reduced to something that ends up on a plan with a dimension.
Right. I know that I have more distance between boats and circle than, for instance, the Fire Department has between the corner of the building and the parking spot at Buckley's. You know, there's a lot more room there for things to get around than there is right at their own Fire Department. So I know that I'm beyond what is needed as far as actually accessing that circle and getting something around there.
No, that makes perfect sense. What will ultimately help us is if somebody says, "We've got X feet, and we need 10, 12, or 14," so that we can look at the plan and say, "Okay, you got it," and we can check that off.
Yeah, I extended it on the plan that I gave you by three feet, and I wrote the dotted line in the boat storage area where I angled them to stay within that. And I added three feet to the part, widened the parking spaces by about three feet. Now, obviously, it's a bit of a chess game. I have to be smart enough to realize that maybe a coupler on one boat needs to be moved a little further up the driveway, because as it comes down, it narrows. So there has to be some flexibility as far as me managing each different-sized boat that comes in. And obviously, I don't want to scrape my truck. I want my customers to be able to get in and out of there without feeling that they can't come in safely. It's only going to demise my business if I don't monitor that, but unfortunately, trying to fit a square into a round hole is the situation we have here as far as the different-sized couplers, trailers, boats coming and going, and it has to be managed on a daily basis. And, you know, it may, you know, that's why I define the area as large enough to accommodate just about any-sized boats, but yes, I can't just put any old boat in one spot. There is a narrowing of those, you know, areas that I have to manage.
I understand. One of the things that we've got to do as the board is provide a result that the staff in the department, or the neighbors, or anybody who's interested in knowing, can take a look at the plan and look around the site and have a sense of whether we've achieved what the plan says.
Sure.
And so I get that you need to have some flexibility. What we need to have is something somebody can look at and say, "There's supposed to be 12 feet here. All right, there's roughly 12 feet here. That makes sense to me." If we have a plan that says, you know, there needs to be enough room for a fire truck, most people don't know what that actually looks like in the real world. That's why putting some specifics on it, it's kind of necessary for us, even if it, we've got to think about a way of doing that that gives you your flexibility.
Eight-seven is about your maximum vehicle width on trucks, cars, boats allowed on the highways, is eight-seven in beam. And, you know, what I graphed out on the map, using the scale on the map and doing that 18-foot section on either side, you know, I just figured the graph on the map is enough to show the size of the circle and the distance from the edge of the circle to the distances that I marked out, which I want to say was about 13, 14 feet.
Can I offer, Mr. Chairman? I have just, listening to what Mr. Skip has been saying, is I've actually measured it between, on his dotted line, which he added to the plans, and the outline of the circle, whatever you like to call it, and he has got as near as damn it, 15 feet marked. So as long as he stays within that, those dotted lines, which he says he's going to do his best to do so, he's all right. You would quite rightly get a tractor-trailer truck around there. If he strays, and sometimes the overhead has shown it could have done, then it might be a little harder. There's certainly in the overhead picture, there's a boat in the north corner, which will probably make it look, if you can keep that 15 foot, you're good.
The date that, you know, after I was at the meeting the last time, I took a little bit better look at that overhead shot that, you know, just like, you know, getting your hand caught in the cookie jar type of situation. That particular day, if you look in the backyard, I had been pulling all the boats out of the backyard to mow the back lawns, clear brush out of the way, neaten up the place, and also get scrap metal and trash out of there to try to do a neaten up. So if you look in the backyard in that picture, you'll see there's not too many boats in the backyard, because I had pulled them to the front to clean that day, which made it look a little bit, you know...
No, that makes sense.
You know, like that's how it always is, which is not the case.
No, no.
Bad timing for me, you know?
All I was saying is it doesn't quite look like the overhead, but I buy that. But basically, your dotted line to the circular grassed area where you have boats displayed shows very nearly 15 foot, 14 foot nine, but, or something like that. And if you maintain that, I don't think anybody's going to argue.
It's in my best interest to maintain that, just for, not just the first responders, but my own customers and my own needs.
Of course, it makes sense. So one of the things that I think the board could consider or should be an outcome of this is that the ultimate plan that you produce indicates that the area indicated on the plan between the dotted lines and the center circle is maintained clear, especially at night after hours.
Sure.
One of the things that we talked about before, oh, I'm sorry, with the gate and the lock key, I was confused by, the lock box is going to have a key that the police have that opens the lock box, and inside the lock box is the key to the gate?
Padlock, yeah, and the gate.
Why don't they just get a key to the padlock?
That'd be fine, you know.
Then they have to run out of multiple keys.
But they gotta have a key for his lock box, too.
Yeah, but it'll be the same key that they authorize for other lock boxes.
Oh, okay, that makes some sense.
I think that's a system that they just go by, probably for the reason you're stating, you know, so they'll do whatever they need us to do there.
Somehow, I just assumed that the key to your lock box would be different than the other lock boxes.
I told them that I would use a chain small enough, that if he needed to snip it for any reason, he could feel free to do so, you know?
No, I understand what they're getting after, and if you're willing to provide them their lock box, then that works fine. How much clear space do you need to have to the right side of your building in order to satisfy what Captain Manuelli wanted to do?
I think a bit, large enough for a vehicle to get down, you know, so he could pull up alongside there if he had to and access the side door and the other door. So I think it's about 20 feet there.
That's what it's marked, Mr. Chairman.
There's 20 feet marked?
Yep.
20 and 30, I think, at one point.
It could be. At one end, it's 23 feet. At the front end, the nearest the road, it's 20 foot.
Okay. One of the other things that we talked about is the landscaping area up front and your situation with the trees and the neighbors, Mr. Seer from Interstate Batteries. Tell me what's happened since the last time we talked about the couple of trees that you have between your property and his, and what you guys might do to make that visibility work out a little bit better?
Yeah, I think they were just seasonal bushes that have died and all, there's not a leaf left on, you wouldn't even notice them right now. It was just during the foliage of, you know, it's kind of one of those plants that pops up, that dies quickly during winter months, and then can come back if nobody tends to it or cuts it. It's just weed-like plants that was blocking. One of those purple-type things, you know, with all the berries on it.
Okay. So can, do you object to there being a condition that you keep that mowed down so that that thing doesn't grow back, whatever it is? If it's just a weed?
Absolutely, that's fine.
If that's the thing that's blocking the view from the neighbors, causing the problems, and it's on your, is it on your land or his land?
It's on his, just barely. It's just the other side of the telephone pole, which I mentioned the last time I was here. It's like, I'll be glad to cut it down for you if you'd like, you know, but it really wasn't even on my property.
Okay. I certainly am not going to send you away with instructions to cut something on somebody else's property.
No.
Whatever's on your property that's there that's not...
They were part of the landscaping design, the trees that are out front, and they really don't block his sign where they're located. They're far enough back, was your coming down the road, in some of the pixels I showed earlier, you can see his sign, those trees aren't blocking it.
At some point before we finish tonight, we'll have a chance for the public to weigh in, and we'll kind of hear what response there is to that. What I want to know is, for the substantial trees that are part of this landscape plan that should be there, let's get the branches cut up high enough so that someone in a car or truck could see under them.
Yep.
And the other stuff that's on your land that's low, that could block traffic, you got to keep mowed.
Sure, absolutely.
And if we impose a condition like that, you can live within that?
Yes, absolutely.
When we talked about before, we talked about the 30 feet from the road was...
The gate.
The gate's somewhere around there, but not exactly. We're not really sure where that is, but you'd be allowed to put boats up to 30 feet from the roadway and no further. And that's basically going to be behind the gate, where that gate is.
Yeah, that was going to be, because we were going to extend a fence on either side of the gate to, you know, kind of keep me within those confines.
That's right. Wherever that gate is, we need to measure, put that on the plan, and then all the boats are going to be on the backside.
Yeah, I was going to do a little fence on either side to just kind of depict that nothing would be on the other side of that gate, of those fenced areas, which would be, you know, in line with the gate itself.
Okay, and nothing on the street side of the gate, all the boats are on the backside.
And what I'm probably going to do is, I'm going to put like one of those half-posts kind of angled down out there to prevent people from even being able to think they can pull in there. Just do a little something, a little, you know, downward post like on a ranch, just so, you know, with a marker, just so people can't even think to do it anymore. That way, I don't have to deal with that anymore.
Makes sense to me. Robert, is there other things that we need to discuss with them that I'm forgetting, or...
The last thing was to make a formal determination on the parking standard to apply here, because I've got nothing to work with in the ordinance.
Okay. You have a science...
Yes, sure, 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 Mr. Chairman.
So Skip, you're saying that the couple of spaces you have right in front of your building, which looks like two spaces with one of them being designated handicap space next to it? Are the spaces that your customers would use or would normally need to use, is that right?
Correct.
Do you need more spaces than that?
No. I just have one employee, myself, and I can honestly tell you, I've only had one handicap person in 14 years, not that we don't want to have a spot for them, but he came in a van, and he was a good customer of mine, but it's just, I don't get a lot of handicap customers at the boat shop for whatever reason.
What was the original parking requirement when the plan was approved, Robert? Proposed onsite parking 10 include one handicap space is what's drawn on the plan. So that's counting those spaces that you've now started to use as boat spaces based on that letter from Nancy back a while back?
Yeah, yeah.
So those couple that you have left, plus those ones down the sides that are now more or less occupied by boats, are the...
Yeah, I think we need to keep a handicap spot open, you know, at, by the door for someone to come in, whatever, whenever that might happen, you know? I think that's maybe an oversight on my part.
Yeah, I was trying to see if there was any formal determination made. There wasn't, it was just as proposed spaces 10, 10 regular and one handicap.
Okay. So under our current parking standards, we don't have one for a boatyard?
Correct.
So it can be whatever the board thinks that it ought to be?
Right. And I think in some memo somewhere along the line, we had proposed a warehouse storage type thing. I have to dig out exactly where that, what memo that came from.
Related to this property?
Yeah.
What are the board's thoughts on number of parking spaces that ought to be required and designated? I mean, actually, he's got the 10 from originally, he's just using them for boats instead of making them available for customers. But what business owner doesn't have the ability to put whatever he wants in his own parking spaces?
If there's a space open that a boat is not occupying, it would be okay for a customer to park there, right?
Of course, yeah. Mr. Chair, in the original memo, we had proposed a, the standard for a warehouse and storage use, because that's essentially what's happening here, and that would require for the size of lot and building he's got is four required spaces.
And so there's these two, plus handicap?
Well, the handicap is one of those two. That's the reserved area for a ramp or something for a handicap space, and that's one, and that's two.
Would those four spaces include the owner and his employee?
Yeah.
Okay. And are you parking in those parking spaces out front, or where do you park?
Yeah, pretty much wherever's open. That's probably not what I should say, but I mean, a lot of times I'll be...
You don't have spots you're using in the back of the building or something like that?
A lot of times I will pull right up to the overhead door, because I'm loading stuff, and I'm not always there long. I'm always, I'm the guy that's always on the move, chasing things down, getting boats, coming and going, but, you know, my office is at my home.
The warehouse and storage standard that you quoted is probably one of the least demanding parking standards that we have, isn't it? If you had to have four spaces, it would be those two, plus something around the back or the side, or wherever you could get a truck out of the way that doesn't offend your obligations to the Fire Marshal.
That's what I was thinking. I mean, a boat is a Department of Transportation vehicle that's registered by the state. A boat has a license plate. It's no different than a car parking.
Well, the boat's trailer could be a DOT vehicle, but it also may be one that's unregistered, but...
It could be two vehicles, a trailer and a boat.
But I'm just saying, wouldn't that count as a parking spot, the boat parking areas, because they are registered vehicles?
That seems to be what Nancy's letter was way back in the day, was that these are your parking spaces, and if you want to use them to store boats in it, you have that right. And that was the administrative interpretation. And I think that if we stuck with that, we could follow that same rule of thumb, if we chose to do that.
I'd have a tendency to go, I'd have a tendency to go along with that. Sorry, Lynn.
Sorry.
Idea, just because it behooves him to have parking for whatever customer show up. And if he's filling up his parking spaces with boats and doesn't have a place for a customer to park, they won't be coming back, and so he needs to manage that himself.
No, I agree with that 100%, although I think that a customer that wants to stop to see if there's a boat for sale that they're interested in, or something like that, and if there's no space, you know, stop right in the loop. And then they're in that spot that you wanted to keep clear for the Fire Department, or at least potentially. Lyndi, different?
If you have a boat in one of these parking spaces, is that going to prevent somebody from coming in? How long does a boat stay in that parking space?
Some can be there a day, some could be there six months. I mean, it really varies, because somebody might be storing their boat there, that lives in a condo or something like that, and I give them a designated spot to come and go.
So you're allowing somebody to put a boat in one of your customer parking spaces for long-term?
I have, yes. I have.
No sinew...
Typically have not had a park, no one has ever really come to me and complained about, you know, not having a place to park their car, because I don't really, people usually just bring their boats and drive them off.
But our point is that, not what you're doing now, but what can be happening in the future.
Sure.
And if we require four parking spaces, and you're saying that your use requires you to allow somebody to park a boat or store a boat in one of those four parking places, then for a long term, you don't have those four parking spaces available for customers coming in and going out, which is what we require.
Yeah, I think, you know, I was trying to be honest with your exact question.
No, I appreciate that.
But at the same time, as I think about it more, you know, in-depth, as I typically function down there, I do keep the people that are staying a long-term typically towards the end of the driveway, and it makes it easy for them to back up and go. And the ones closer up to my door usually are people that are going to be there for a short term and closer to the door, because they're going to be coming in and out quickly. And it's quicker for me to grab them up top, bring them in, bring them out, park them, have them pick up. A lot of times, when a boat is ready for actual pickup after a long project, I park them at the end of the circle, so that they have an easy way to back up to the boats, grab them.
I understand...
So I do manage it to some degree.
I understand boats.
Right.
I get what you're saying. I think that, though, if four is the number, and you've got the two that are on the plan in front of your building, and at least two of those other spaces that have boats in them are transient enough to at least sometimes be available for customers.
Right.
You're getting into the neighborhood where we can start to say, "Okay, you got what you need," or you've met the standard.
Transient is not six months.
No, it's not. And that's what I mean by the ones that are there for a day, or I dropped it off to fix, and I'm going to pick it up tomorrow, and those kinds of things.
Do you have enough space for long-term storage, so that the spaces that we require are available for customers on a day-to-day basis?
Yes, if I want to, you know, put the extra effort in to get some of them parked out back, yes, I could, you know, but sometimes I, it's a chess game. Every day I walk...
Well, could an extra effort is...
Well, yeah, but it's a chess game.
Not where we're going.
It's a chess game, when I go in there every day, in every circumstance...
We're the planning board.
Sure, I understand, and I plan daily for what I'm going to do and how I'm going to attack it, and how I'm going to keep things clear, you know? And I understand yours has to be more concrete than that.
Yep.
But I'm just being honest on how I handle things there. And, you know, as an old air traffic controller, I'm pretty good at it.
Understood. Vinnie?
Okay.
It's an unusual business. I can only apologize.
It's not an unusual business.
You can apologize, sir, but what it comes down to is we're asking for four spaces for people to pull in and park and do what they have to do, in and out quickly.
Absolutely.
And not use those spaces. I'm not, I'm not for using those spaces for storage. If a boat comes in, and at the end of the day, that boat is stored someplace else and that space is open, that's how I look at it. So we're, you know, what Lynn has said was, you know, are there going to be four spaces available, period, at the end of the day? Can you commit to that?
Yes.
No problem, not juggling, not doing some air traffic controlling, not anything fancy? Give us four spaces.
To the best of my ability.
No, 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 no. Can you give us four spaces? Not best of the ability, four spaces.
You can have your four spaces.
That no boats will be parked in overnight.
Yeah, well, you're asking me to, you're asking, you're asking me to play God here, and I don't have that type of power, but I can definitely...
No, no, we're not.
All right, no, no.
Open four cars, absolutely.
Excuse me, sorry.
Right.
I just asked you if you could, can you give us four spaces?
Yes, I can.
No questions asked, on a daily basis, at the end of the day, those spaces are clear?
Yes, at the end of the day, absolutely.
Okay.
I think that was key right there.
That, that is key. At the end of the day, when you park, when, when you're done for the day and you're gone?
Yep.
Four spaces open?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So, that means when a customer comes in and says, hey, can you squeeze one more in there? You may have to say no.
Correct, yeah.
Because those spaces, if you're committing to them, you're committing to them.
I know how to say no. I do it all the time.
And lastly, I guess I'd like to know where on the plan it would be indicated. You have to draw that out so that...
Absolutely.
That way, if anybody comes in to look, the fire department, whatever, they may drift in after hours, whatever it might be, you know. Because this whole thing is happening because of enforcement action, because you have not been managing your property properly. And there are concerns with safety. That's, that's why this is going on. Plain and simple, your property is not big enough for your day-to-day use. And you're really juggling hard to make it work. And I understand that and I appreciate it. Okay. But, you know, they're looking. We've seen write-ups. I've seen, you know, before this, that there were write-ups that the fire department has had issues in the past.
How long ago was that, sir?
It was in the last packet that we got, our first packet. That information is available from the town. I'm sure they can show it to you.
I believe it was maybe close to five years ago.
It, it may have been, but...
So, it's been managed pretty well since those dates, is my belief.
I hope it is.
Okay. But, you know, I, I also...
All right. As long as, as long as you can commit to four spaces.
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. And the other thing that I'm going to ask is that the board gets some sort of follow-up from the fire department stating that in fact, not what you said, he said, but that he's agreed, this is what we're going to have. He's reviewed the plan. He's reviewed the four spaces and the accessibility to the...
The fire department didn't care about the four spaces or the accessibility. They just care about the fire truck around.
Well, they want, they want accessibility to the building.
Yeah.
The fire, the fire lane, so to speak, I would imagine. But I want to know that, you know, you've had that conversation and everybody's happy before I sign off, before I vote in favor of anything.
Sure.
I think that's what the staff is suggesting, although the staff is the one that is reporting what Captain Manuelli said about the situation. Nelson?
Well, I think, I think Vinny pretty much covered what I was going to say. I want to see the four spaces on the plan. I think, I think they should be part of it. And he's going to have to manage to, to juggle things to make that happen.
Let's go over some of the requirements for you and then we'll sort of discuss what the process is from here. The staff is asking that there be a plan prepared that shows the things that we've discussed, which is a dimension on where the gate is, a note on the plan that says the boats are going to be parked behind the gate, that there'll be an extension of the fence to the ends. If you want to add something that blocks those front parking spaces, that's optional for you. That isn't something that we've discussed as a requirement. The, there's a note on the plan to indicate that the circle and the side of the building will remain sufficiently clear to allow access by a fire truck, which we're discussing to mean roughly 14 or 15 feet around that circle. I don't know if that's as much as you need around the side. That there be four designated parking spaces shown on a plan and that those spaces actually in real life end up clear at the end of the day. Did I cover, is there other requirements?
Trees and, the trees and shrubs, Mr. Chair.
The, the trees that are supposed to be on the landscape plan are trimmed high enough to be able to see under. The shrubs that are not on the landscape plan, or weeds, or whatever they call, get maintained and mowed down. Other comments?
No parking in front of the fence.
Yeah, no parking in front of the fence was a note. So, what the staff is suggesting to us is that a plan be created that reflects all of those things and that you bring it and show it to us, then we would vote on the final approval for this.
Okay.
If that's the will of the board, one element of that relates to the amount of time that we have to make decisions on any application before us, which is by law, 65 days from when it was submitted. You're on day 63 today. So, in order to accomplish this idea where you're going to make a plan for us to come back and look at again, you've got to authorize us to extend that 65 days. If you don't authorize that, then we vote tonight and the vote goes however the vote goes.
Sure.
So, is that something that you're willing to do in terms of requesting an extension to allow that time for you to make that plan?
I, I would like to request that. Yes, please.
Say yes.
Yes.
And I, I don't know how much time you want or would need to be able to do that. I think, what did I say? Our next meeting is January 17th. Is the agenda still available for that one or is it closed?
I feel like it's closed, but I'm not entirely sure. So, 30, yeah.
So, the first one in February is going to be?
Just coming. It's going to be February the 7th, Mr. Chair.
February the 7th? Could you be ready by February 7th with a plan that shows all of those notes? You can work with the department to make sure that you got them all. You can show them, so is this right? And they'll take a look at it for you.
I shall. I do have a question.
Sure.
On the side of the building that is to be kept open, that's 23 feet wide?
Yes.
Can kind of two parking spots be along that rail there on that side?
Yeah, you got 23 feet. I mean, like you said, a, a, a very wide truck is roughly eight-something, but a regular automobile is six foot six. So, two parallel parking spots away from the building?
Right. Closest to that gate, oh, it's not a gate. It's like a wooden rail because there's a detention area right there.
Yep.
Because as it stands right now, those aren't, those spots aren't designated for anything.
So, those could be your two designated parking spaces on the plan.
Exactly. That's what I would hope that I could do. And that would keep people close to the building as they pull in.
And not mess up whatever else you got.
They can come straight up the circle and go right into either one of those spots.
Mm-hmm.
The other question I have, and, you know, this goes back to when I first did the site plan and, you know, I envisioned as I came into Merrimack, I saw empty pavement everywhere, Webb Plumbing behind me, empty pavement across the street where there were basketball courts, National Corp with plenty of room. I thought, these guys are going to love me because I'm going to have all these boats that I can store and pay them money for their empty spots, which would hopefully help the economy in this area somehow. But as I put my boats down at National Corp and across the street and at Webb Plumbing, I, they, customers kept getting letters from the town saying, he can't park boats there. At one point...
Well, did you make arrangements with the, with Webb and all those people or did you?
I did. I made arrangements with everybody and, and signed leases and, you know, and they said, yeah, you can park your boats here in the area. And the spot across the street from me was the Department of Transportation. It said, I had Morgan Hollis look into it. It said, any vehicle in that lot directly across the street, remember where all the logs are right now, any vehicle cannot park there as long as a Department of Transportation vehicle, which I believe trailers are, which have the boats on them. But I tried very hard to, you know, get space down there. But then everybody stopped renting to me because there was so much pressure from the town to not allow it, that my hands became tied as I tried to downsize. As I moved in from a larger facility to a smaller, because I'm getting older, I wanted to downsize. There was a little transition that had to take place there, you know. So, you know, I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, you know, a giant circle of, you know, I tried to do the right things, but I was cut off at my feet.
I get it. And it may have been at some point in time in the past where the approach from the town's a little bit different. I can tell you that if you had somebody saying, hey, Skip, I'll rent you my parking lot to use as your overflow lot, and you came to us for approval to use some existing parking lot somewhere as an overflow lot, I don't think that you'd run into any significant regulatory obstacles from us.
Well, that's a change from what I first experienced when I came into town and I tried to do that, you know.
And, and it is a change.
Yes.
And it's a good change, so...
But I just don't want you to think that I haven't been trying to do the right things.
Not, not, not a question. It is a change and it is a welcome change.
Okay. Well, we may, we may exercise that. I don't know if it'll be necessary. Like I said, I'm getting older and that yard seems to be able to keep me under control.
Don't say older in front of me.
You're right. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I think that, that on the other side of DW Highway, not that far up over by the Common Man where that auto body shop was, where there used to be a bus yard behind there, that bus yard is the overflow lot for that...
You talking about Railroad Square?
No, no, not that far down.
The side dealing, the, the used side deal. Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah. There's a lot behind there.
Across from the old McDonald's, if you've been here in town for a while.
Have done exactly that. They have an overflow lot for their extra vehicles and, and they're not allowed to store Rex and tons.
I may look into that again, knowing that that might be a possibility, whereas before I got, you know, kind of slapped down every time I tried to do it. And then no one wanted to rent to me because I kept getting letters.
No question. And certainly others, there's high-end rent at the other end with vault and that's what they do for a living is store all the boats inside. Same thing. It's just, it's got a cover on it, but it's an overflow lot.
Amazingly, the economy took all that storage away. They just kind of seemed to disappear. But back in '05 and '04, they just, you know, it was obviously a great location. Everybody wanted to store their boats around my area. And you could see across the street, it was packed with 50, 60 boats over there at one time.
I, I, I'm sure that you're going to run into any number of different variety of requirements based on who's renting the property and what they need and what they expect from the boats that you place there, whether they're secure and lit and protected and insured and...
I think I'm going to live within my means at this point and try to just adjust the lot to, you know, manage it as necessary and not grow it anymore. But I'm just stating that at one time, I did try to deal with the overflow.
Yeah, very good. Before we get to the point of making motions and making final actions, let's at least offer the opportunity for any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in on what's been discussed tonight or what might be the board's final action. John, come on forward.
John Seer, Interstate Battery, a butter to Skip's. Again, I would just put out to you guys the safety side of things as far as pulling out of my place. The trees, Skip, I know there was that bush there, but the trees with the leaves on, still in the way. So, I would hope that it would be mentioned in there that when the leaves come back, that could be readdressed. Because yes, now they're not there. The other thing is, is that, Skip, you have so much stuff there that you're unloading tractor trailers on Daniel Webster Highway. The tool guys are parking on Daniel Webster Highway because they can't get into your yard. I think I made, I put some stuff in for you guys to see that stuff. So...
I've seen the same thing happen in your yard where they're parking out in the street. Is there trying for one truck?
All right, hang on, hang on, guys.
It's good for the goose.
Skip, both of you guys, you're addressing us each individually, not each other.
I will address that to the fact that I never unload trucks on the highway. They may stop there to back in.
Fair enough. You don't have a matter before us.
Okay, so, that's one of the things. And I've shown that in there. So, trees and clear line of sight coming out of my place. I think I asked you guys as far as when you're down there, take a ride and check it out. And then stuff that's happening on the highway. So, again, safety is my, for my customers coming in and out of my place.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I think the tree bit, we've kind of talked about a little bit before, but just to make it clear, in the springtime when there's leaves on the trees, the expectation is that the branches on the trees will be cut high enough so that you can see under them if you're parked in your driveway or his, to be able to look up and down the road. What's that?
Sightline.
Sightline distance. With respect to your vendors and where they park and all of that, I know you don't always have control over anybody that might pull up, but to the extent that you've got some control, you got to exercise it and get them to come onto your lot and, and be out of the roadway for that. I'm not sure how often that happens or what you have that comes and goes. And again, a truck driver could decide that he wants a coffee and stop at Dunkin' Donuts by pulling over on the side of the road and do the exact same thing on Cotton Road Boulevard.
Sure.
It can happen. You don't always control it. But to the extent that it's a regular tool vendor, somebody that you deal with, have a conversation with them and have them get out, get into your property.
Yeah, I'll definitely talk to the Mac Tool guy and ask him not to park down there. As far as the trucks making deliveries, yeah, he has, I guess that's an easy thing for him to do. We take our fork truck down there. We take one pallet off. I think it maybe happened four times this season. I think I had four deliveries via tractor-trailer truck. So, yeah. And it's usually in the fall and that's about it. So, you know, we'll, we'll ask him to address that too and ask him if he can pull into the driveway from now on.
Understood. Vinny?
Question for staff and the board. Are we addressing the use of this property as a warehouse and storage?
The, the department has determined that that's the most approximate use that we have listed in our parking regulations.
Right.
But as for its use in general, it's an industrial use and in the industrial zone. I don't know that we've gotten any more specific than that.
Yeah, not really, no. So, the intended use of the property is not put on the plan?
They had identified it as...
As an industrial. So, I have one industrial.
More specifically, is it, is it designated as a boatyard or boat sales, boat repairs?
Oh, I see.
And that's...
It's a category that we just don't have.
I don't have.
So, that's where the issue is.
But what category?
How we categorize it?
We, we have to, we have to apply rules somehow to some sort of category. What is it?
Right, not. So, that's where, I don't know how it was categorized initially when it was approved 10 or 12 years ago. But at least for the parking situation that we have now. When I was looking on the plan before to see how parking was handled, they just labeled 11 spaces.
Okay. So, we're using industrial warehousing as the parking requirement because that seems to fit the bill?
Warehousing, storage in the industrial zone.
Right.
Okay. Does, and I, I'm sorry that I don't know this, does the town of Merrimack require some sort of designated loading zones in these properties?
No.
Yeah, I'm not...
No.
No?
No.
If you have a, if you have a warehousing storage?
Yep.
Normally, there's an area for loading and unloading.
Right.
Nothing is required as far as our regs go for designation of that area?
Exact, specific spots, yeah.
Okay. That might be something that this board in the town might want to address so that in the future, we can sort of nail these things down so they don't become a problem in the future.
Yeah, no question. Although, not in an industrial zone, but in commercial zones all over New Hampshire, cars and delivery trucks and Coca-Cola and beer and UPS and the postmen and everybody else, they stop wherever it...
Exactly what they do. They do exactly what they do in front of my place. I mean, I live by the lobster boat. I'm always having to squeak by tractor-trailer trucks on Loop Road to get by. You know something? That's okay. That's commerce. That's how we make the wheels go around. It can't be a perfect situation all the time.
Understood.
It happens in Boston, too, I think, from what I've seen.
Boston is not Murry.
Yeah, we're not Merrimack.
We've got a lot more room in front of my place.
What I was getting at is, is that it is God's own, truck drivers, bless their little souls, are not the most disciplined and law-abiding characters. They, they're transient and they, they do what's the most convenient for them for getting on with a job.
And Loop Road is not DW Highway.
No, it's a very narrow. So, the deliveries to your place now, we're talking about four times a year. What are they, what's the product that's getting delivered?
It's a 200-pound roll of shrink wrap, usually two rolls on a pallet. I run down with my fork truck. I grab it. I pull it out. If the truck's there 10 minutes, I...
That's the shrink wrap that you use for the boats in the...
Shrinking the boats and things like that. Sometimes it might have antifreeze on it. I usually put in a big order for the fall and then about, I'll do four orders usually, maybe five, you know. But I'd say about four is what we did via tractor-trailer truck.
Yeah.
And it's usually one pallet.
I would say that four or five deliveries to a business is de minimis and isn't necessarily something that the board has to come up with a special approach for in this case. Obviously, if you're dealing with Budweiser and they're loading their trucks, their trucks in the roads.
These are far from daily deliveries, far, far.
Understood. Understood. Are there any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Is, what's the best way to consider as a board, how to take final action with the long list of things without having to tick them off the list or something? Or you want to say as described or as identified by Robert in his notes or as discussed?
As discussed. And what, what we want to do, I think, tonight is table this to a date certain. And given that he has concurred with that in writing, I think you usually get something in writing, right? Or not? Just an agreement that he's okay with the extension and that we take it up again at the next meeting. And I think we've given him guidance at this meeting as to what we want to see on that plan.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with most of that stuff. I don't think that we ever require him to put the request for extension in writing, but maybe we do.
I think it's, it, it looks good to have that backup. And since he's got another day, he can just very easily send an email into me and say, I grant the board an extension of 30 days or whatever.
Yeah.
Yep. And that way, I can have, there's a record in there.
Do you have enough of an understanding of what we've asked of you? Or do you want to have a communication from the department? Or you want to just check with them to make sure that you've got these things covered or?
I think if you sent me an email kind of prompting me with the correct language, I would then send back to you using that same correct language, that the answer is yes, I would like an extension. I don't know if it's an extension of site plan, review site plan.
Extension is fine.
Easily done. I'm talking about all the things that have to be added to your plan. Are you aware of all of the things that we've ticked off and listed today? Or do you want some communication that says you got to get four parking spaces and you got to get the dimensions on the?
Yeah, it would be nice to know exactly what he's looking for based on the notes you've taken because obviously you've heard what they've said. You've taken the notes down. I listen very carefully, but I want to make sure that what he perceives and I perceive.
Understood. Are you prepared to do that?
We are looking for.
All right. And Nelson, you're absolutely right that we don't have to vote on any of that because of this. So thank you for paying attention to that. With that, the action that would be before the board is tabling to February seventh. That this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this matter to February the seventh, giving Mr. Moore time to get his information from the Community Development Department, giving him time to prepare revised plans as requested, giving the Community Development Department an email confirming an extension, and that we look forward to seeing Mr. Moore on the February the seventh at seven o'clock in this room to get it all finalized.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? Second by Mr. Russo.
Could I take the gentleman from Interstate?
John.
Before you, no, before you rush out the door, will you sign the clip out? I noticed you didn't. I'm being very pedantic, but.
That's okay.
He's English, so he can be. Good job.
Whatever he said, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor of the motion to table to February seventh, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is six zero zero to continue. Thank you, Skip, for the presentation.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to catch you.
No problem.
Thank you so much. Do you have another question?
No, I mean, just, so I'm gonna rewrite the map to include the parking spaces and the stuff that he sends me, but.
Yep.
Correct.
Work with community development.
Robert will hold your hand all the way through.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you, Skip.
Awesome.
And don't wait till February.
Yeah, don't wait till the last minute. Item four, John Paul for Chris Burke of Chris Burke Painting and Carpentry. Review for consideration and final approval of a home occupation to permit painting and carpentry contractor's business located at seventy-eight Babusick Lake Road in the R Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map five C lot five sixty-eight. Robert, what do we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
I have nothing specific to get into on this one, so I think you can just jump in, let the applicant make his presentation.
Okay. Before we hear from the applicant, the one question that I have is just to be clear as to what the most recent status is with respect to signage.
Okay.
What's the sign situation?
So there was a little bit of a cart before the horse situation with this only because of ZBA Planning Board calendar deadlines. The applicant is looking for a four-and-a-half-square-foot sign. When we went to the ZBA, there was some math calculation that was a little off and the way it was worded and presented was a little awkward. So the ZBA requested that he withdraw the application at the table, come in, work it out with us to make sure that the numbers are right, and then reapply. So the applicant did that. So the applicant is before you because, yes, he does want a sign for his home occupation. It is going to be, it's being requested as larger than is allowed by the zoning ordinance, and the ZBA will take that back up later in January.
Okay. Other than as required by the zoning ordinance, if he was, if he was providing a sign of the proper size, that particular sign would not be our issue for us to consider, or it would be?
It would be because basically he's before you for permission for this because of the fact that he wants a sign. If he did not want a sign, then it could be a non-Planning Board issue, like administrative approval type.
For the whole home occupation. Okay, I got you.
Yep.
Mr. Russo.
Just a question for staff. There's a note that says this property is under subject of enforcement action. What is that enforcement action?
Because the home occupation was operating without prior approval from this board and also because the sign had also been put up before any approval for it was issued.
So the home occupation is basically him working out of his office in his home for himself?
Yeah, basically, he's using the home as the office area for the business and all the actual business work is off-site at various locations.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and tell us what's going on.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy New Year. My name is John Paul. I'm speaking on behalf of Chris Burke and the Chris Burke Painting and Carpentry Company. Tonight, we were hoping to go over more for the home occupancy for a final approval to permit a painting and carpentry office in his home. So if it was like the last meeting, I'll kind of answer the questions that were given.
Yes, please. Proceed any way that you'd like. We're not usually as tough as we were.
This is different than the ZBA, so just proceed how you want.
Okay. Is the applicant the property owner? No, he is not. Isabel Burke is the property owner at seventy-eight Babusick Lake Road. Question number five asks the number of employees proposed. There are no employees on the premises. Chris operates solely outside of his home, makes use of subcontractors, so whether it's, if it's a commercial job or a job for a personal client, this work is done at the business or, you know, home that he gets hired for.
So does he do his billing and whatever other office functions he has in this house on seventy-eight Babusick Lake Road?
Yes, he's, he's asking, you know, emails, things of that nature, billing.
All those things are fine and acceptable, but that makes him count as an employee while he's there doing it?
Then, in that case, he would be the employee, but there are no other employees.
Other than him. Okay, gotcha.
And then it asks us to describe the nature of the business. So he owns the Painting and Carpentry Company, which does off-site work and home services and then around the town of Merrimack, New Hampshire. If the business involves storage of goods or wares, how much will be stored on-site and where will they be stored? So again, Chris uses, you know, this office space more or less. It's a computer, a printer, that nature. As far as what it is that's stored, he has ladders, he has a couple of ladders that are put on trucks that are registered in town of Merrimack. Any tools such as paintbrushes, things of that nature are stored in those vehicles. Most of the work and any of the materials that are used are bought and brought directly on the site, wherever it is he's working. So if he's gonna be doing a siding project or a painting project, anything of that nature, the deliveries will not be at any point brought to his home. They're brought to the site in which he's doing the work. Next question. How many customers, clients do you expect will visit the property each day? There are, there are no customers or clients that come to the property. He has really nothing at the property to sell. It's not an office that you would even see looking at the.
Understood. So you mentioned that he's using trucks to do his work when he goes out to sites. How many trucks are there?
Say that again.
How many? How many trucks?
Up to five vehicles.
Okay, so the five trucks with, I don't know, a sign on the side that says Chris Burke Painting or whatever, maybe they don't, I don't know. But they're his business trucks.
They're his trucks that he has magnets that he puts on the trucks.
Makes sense. Where do they all come home at night?
I don't believe they all get used every night, so he may use a specific truck for a specific job, but.
Where do they store?
Where do they go when they're not in use?
They do go on the property at seventy-eight Babusick.
Okay. So that stuff is part of the consideration for this. So five, five trucks? How about tool trailers and those sorts of things? Does he have tool trailers?
Basically, all the stuff that is used, again, is done on the job site. His ladders are stored on his trucks and painting, things of that nature. He's got an account with Home Depot, for instance. If he knows he's gonna be going to a specific job, he'll order the paint, pick up the paint, go to the job, and, you know, from there. If the job is a bigger job, Chris has got an account with A1 in Nashville where he has, from time to time, had to deliver a dumpster to the home, not his home, to the, to the workplace where materials would be taken care of there. So at no point is he bringing job trash to his home.
Understood. What about trailers? Does he use tool trailers to, do he tow trailers behind his truck?
I know that in the past, he's borrowed friends' trailers if he's got a bigger job from here and there. I do believe he has one trailer that, from time to time, that would go for a specific job.
Are the trucks and one trailer ever put out by the road?
I have the, and I'd be happy to give these to you all if it might help at all. It's a plot plan.
Just talk.
Just talk, okay.
Talk for now, we'll go over.
So it's a relatively decent-sized lot.
No, I understand. What I'm getting at is are the trucks parked up by the road so that somebody sees them and thinks, hey, that looks like a good painting company? I'll go do business with Chris Burke.
Right, yes. Specifically, this summer, two of his trucks were parked closer to the road, still very much in his driveway, not on the road, but in his driveway, and, but they were parked closer to the road. Yes, they were.
Okay, thanks. Please continue with your presentation.
Identify the hour of operation, so, you know, this varies with this type of work. Often, Chris might leave at seven, Chris might leave at ten, depending on the job. But I kind of put nine to five, you know, in and around there. And does that mean at eight o'clock at night, he doesn't do an email or talk to a customer? No, but it's primarily a first-shift job, you know, kind of thing that I think if you looked at it from a forty or fifty-hour a week.
No, I understand. The hours aren't, since there's no customers coming and you're never quote "open" for business where somebody's gonna walk or pull in, I don't care what hours you work.
Okay. Will a sign be used to identify the business? And, yes, we checked, yes, we are currently applying for a variance again. We had a discrepancy on the size. We also realized that, you know, when we were doing this, it kind of came, the horse came before the cart. They had asked us to do the sign and then do this. Recognizing now that might make more sense to do this, we're coming back, I believe, on the twenty-fifth.
So let's talk a little bit about the sign. So normally with a home occupation business where somebody cuts hair or babysits or walks dogs or something, the purpose of the sign is so the customers can find the business, the customers that are coming to the business. But you don't have any customers come into this business. So the sign is just purely advertising as much as being like a Yellow Pages ad?
Yes, it isn't a sign that says, you know, vacancy or welcome for business or anything like that to attract the customer onto the lot. It's primarily a, it's a twenty-nine-inch round sign.
Yeah, I've seen it. Don't look that far away.
States just, you know, Chris Burke Painting and Carpentry with his phone number to create awareness in the community. That's it.
Okay. Usually with a home occupation, the purpose of the sign is because it's needed so that a customer can find the hairdresser or the gunsmith or something like that.
Yeah, this is not that case. This is purely so if somebody drives by, they would go, hey, you know, I need something painted. I consider Chris Burke has a company. His phone number is on the sign.
A worthy objective, but not consistent with the residential neighborhood?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Obviously, we want businesses to be able to advertise if they want to and within the rules and regulations. But in a residential neighborhood, you don't have that kind of just pure advertising signage that says, hey, Gold's Gym's a nice place to go.
Right. And, you know, I think we recognize that in having seen, especially on Babusick Lake Road, there are a lot of companies that have signs out, and, you know, we see them everywhere on Babusick Lake.
I don't.
I could be wrong, but.
I mean, other than right up near the center of town, I don't see a whole lot of them.
I don't see a lot of signs.
But, but there are, there are signs. There are signs. There's a sign for a dentist up the street. There's a sign for the towing company.
Close to DW Highway?
Excuse me?
Close to DW Highway.
No, I just mean Babusick Lake Road.
Babusick Lake Road, close to DW Highway. You see signs?
The chiropractor there, right next to.
Yeah, do you see any signs down on your area of the road?
As far, I see, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Not an answer required.
Yeah, I've, actually, I haven't measured.
Not an answer required.
I never even took that into account.
Okay, we got you. So the reason that we regulate home occupations at all is because all of the neighbors that bought their houses have decided they wanted to live in a residential area. And although we allow people to do business in their homes, it's intended to have as modest a footprint as you can get. So I'm a lawyer. If I want to draft pleadings in my basement, nobody would ever know.
I understand.
Perfect, perfect home occupation. But when you got five trucks and maybe a trailer and then a sign that's needs a variance, you're really kind of a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood that really is starting to strain the definitions of what really ought to be there, what we really ought to be approving, at least in my mind. So I need you to help me understand why five trucks in a, what's almost become, I know that you don't have materials stored there because you've said so, but almost a contractor's yard.
I see your point.
How does that fit in with a residential use?
I see your point.
Lynn?
If, if he were not storing any trucks on that property, never mind the sign issue, because I'm not gonna go there, but if he were not storing any trucks on that property, then how would this differ from some lady selling Tupperware out of her house and keeping her books? Or some IT engineer working for Midair Corporation or anybody else, working out of his home, would they need a home occupation permit?
They would just get an administrative approval. In those cases, they would just, they'd talk to us about it in the office. We'd say, okay, you meet the criteria in the ordinance where you do not need Planning Board approval. We'd write them a letter and they'd be good to go.
So I'm, I'm writing mortgages. And I have a desk in my house that I have files sitting in a file cabinet. And do I need to come to the town and say, I'm writing mortgages and I'm, and I'm working out of my house and do I need this approval?
So basically, the section that says, "Home occupations which meet all of these criteria, which I'm about to list, are not subject to site plan review," and this is where we would give them just administrative approval. There's no external evidence of it. There's no individual employed who's not a resident. The dwelling meets off-street parking requirements. There's no visitors, customers, or solicitations coming there. There's no business sign of any type. No more than twenty-five percent of the inhabitable floor area is used by the office and delivery of goods are limited to like UPS-sized vans and no more than two per day. So as long as they meet those criteria, then that's where we would just say, okay, administrative approval. We'd write them a letter and it would be okay.
So with, so with the exception of the sign, gentlemen?
Thank you, I apologize.
With the exception of the sign, he can do administrative approval for what he's doing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Minus the trucks.
Well, the trucks.
Well, I understand. And if the trucks are not stored there, then he can do administrative approval and he doesn't need approval for a home occupation?
You're right. Now, the truck issue comes up, too. Because you can see a contractor or other tradesman may store building materials or construction equipment. Where did I see? All right, "Home occupations expressly do not include commercial kennels, the parking, or storage of tractor-trailers, auto repair, or small engine repair, welding, or other uses which involve visible storage on the property of automobiles or parts thereof." And that's where it would fall under Planning Board. So it's the trucks and the sign.
So if he's not storing trucks there.
So if he's not storing them there.
Then he can do administrative approval.
No sign, no trucks, yes, administrative approval.
And then all the, all the issue comes down to the sign. Now, I know we've dealt with the sign. If he wants to come in and have a sign on that property, does he have to have approval for a home occupation?
Yes.
He does.
Because that would be external evidence that the business is there.
Okay, that was my point. That was what I was trying to get to, to.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was sort of my beginning because if he didn't, if the sign was not our decision but the zoning board's, then we wouldn't even be discussing it here. The zoning board would grant a variance or not, and the guy would have a two-foot or a four-foot sign.
But I don't know that the, I don't know that the zoning board can grant a variance if they don't have a home occupation.
They, right, exactly. They can't just say, you have approval for a sign, and then anybody can put a sign up because that section of the ordinance is specifically tied to home occupation approval. So he would have the approval for a sign of the size that exceeds the ordinance language, but it would be specifically tied to getting a approval for a home occupation from the planning board.
So he can do what he's doing there, except for the storage of the trucks, which I'm not convinced they're stored there. But he can do what he's doing there as long as the trucks are not stored there.
And he doesn't have a sign.
Yeah, with no sign.
But if he wants a sign, then he has to have approval for a home occupation. Now, does the sign have to be? Now, does the sign have to be, well, we went through this, um, if the sign is less than forty-eight square feet?
Two, two square feet.
Two square, I'm sorry. We, I've gone through this before. If the sign is smaller than what is currently allowed, can he do that if he doesn't have an approval for a home occupation?
You know, he still needs that approval because of the fact that there's going to be a sign.
Okay, okay.
So any sign gets planning board.
Any sign, okay.
Right.
And then over two feet gives him to the zoning board for variance.
That's, that's something else, okay.
So.
Does that help, clarify?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
We, we will work through it all and we'll get it all clear for you so you know, understand what it is that we're, um, willing to approve or not approve or what the requirements might be for that. Um, so, it, when there's five trucks.
Yeah.
He's obviously not leaving in those on his own. He's got some employees that are coming to pick up their truck on Monday and head off to a job.
Yeah, no, that's, I don't believe that is the case. And, and I do want to make note too that, um, we had seen, I, I think there was a, a letter, it might have been a complaint or something, that kind of initiated.
Yeah, that's not before us, I don't know what the complaint is. But if you've got a company truck here, somebody's gotta take the company truck to go do some company work with it.
Right, but, but my point is, those five trucks don't go out every day. Now, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback from where the road is to where these trucks are. And there was a, a picture taken, um, when Chris had a few of his trucks up front, he had had some work done on them. Someone had picked them up. Um, they were out there for a period of time. That's when those pictures were taken. Typically, you cannot even see those trucks from the road. Um, and, and, and I will say that he did become more mindful of this when this was brought to his attention. Um, he had taken, I had watched him take his trucks and put it right next to his home behind the fence. Um, when, in fact, there were a few stored in the front because there was some work being done by a, a local company. And they had been there for a bit of time. But if you were to drive by the neighborhood, again, he's got a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback.
Sorry, I can, I can tell you that I drive by there every single day.
But you can't see them as much.
I've seen a truck parked near the road as if it was a sign deliberately to appear as a sign.
I, I, and.
It may not be every day, it may not be frequently.
I believe at one point, um, that may have actually been the intention, I, I do.
That may have been.
Uh, I'm, one of my points is, I believe at one point, that may have actually have been the intention. Um, you know, we're not sure we can put a sign up or not. If I put my magnets out on my truck, it might bring a little bit of awareness to people. At no point did he think he was doing anything that was not right with the town.
No, no, I'm not questioning that, but when you say that you can't see the trucks, I'm telling you, you, you say you can't see the trucks and if you drive by every day, you won't see them, I'm telling you, I do drive by there and I do see them.
Right. I, and I, and I see your point and I, and I, my point was just, after this initial thing started, we have gone out of our way to make sure that those trucks were no longer in that strip. Um, in fact, pretty much put behind the building. Um, so you can't see them. So for a period of time, yes, they were used that way.
Now, you were very, very frustrated with my sense that if you got a company truck there, the company truck goes out to do some work, somebody, some employee shows up to get that truck.
I'm not, I am not.
You're both shaking your head, but explain to me, what's the point of having five company trucks if there aren't employees that show up to drive the trucks to the job site?
Very good question and I, and at no point do I, I want you to think I'm frustrated. Um, Chris does different types of work. Um, he may one day do siding job for somebody. He may one day, um, be picking up, uh, trash for somebody.
Are, are you, are you saying that Chris is driving these trucks, not an employee?
I'm saying that more often than not, those trucks.
No, no, stop, you're equivocating the answer. More often than not isn't the question or the answer.
Are you saying that Chris is driving those trucks and not an employee?
Uh, he, Chris does not have employees, Chris has subcontractors.
So, Chris is, Chris is driving those trucks, not an employee?
Hang on, sir, you either gotta come to the table and introduce yourself and sign in. Please, i- i- if, are you Chris? Are you Chris?
Yes, yes, sir.
Come on forward, I mean, you don't have to sit in the back, sit up here in the front.
I wasn't sure if it was right.
No, no.
I, I was on vacation last week, uh, we talked about the sign.
Take a second to sign in the clipboard.
Right on, thank you.
No, and, and speak up. So, uh, I, I don't have employees, but I have subcontractors, isn't an answer that's actually gonna serve you very well with this. The point is, some human being shows up at your property who doesn't live there, leaves their Honda Accord, gets into a truck that does siding or painting or plumbing or whatever it is and drives it somewhere. Is that what happens?
Okay, uh, I don't know what if he Honda Accords.
Touch your microphone.
Okay, uh, I think you put something up there. This is, this, this is what I have for vehicles. They are registered to me personally, to my personal name.
Your microphone's not on, touch, touch your microphone.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I'm getting the wave, I'm getting the thumbs up from behind me.
All right. Um, I have a small minivan, we're talking trucks, everybody's using these big words about trucks. I do have one, one-ton, uh, two-thousand-and-one, one-ton truck that is an equipment truck that carries larger pieces of wood. It's not used every day. It also, it's used to tow my construction trailer, which carries, it's, it's, it's a workshop, okay? My intention with these vehicles that I have, one of which I've had, it's a nineteen-eighty-seven Chevy I've had since the first day I've ever been in business twenty-five years ago. So maybe we can get rid of that because it's nostalgic, but I have ladders on that. My intention with these vehicles was to keep the equipment from being in the yard and visible on the yard and especially when it's snowing, you can't pick ladders up out of snow, to have them on, you know, to use them as like, almost like a, where we, where we can go to the dump with it. One of the vehicles I use, uh, we go to the dump quite often, um, with it, so. Um, then, of course, the big truck, which is what, you know, we could really only one we could call a truck besides my one-fifty that I take to do sales. I have a, a very nice new two-thousand-and-ten one-fifty that has magnets on it that can come off and go back on. Um, that, I use that to go do my estimates in because, and I'm sure you've seen me around doing that. Um, I have a, I have a Dodge minivan that's registered to my name that has two little small magnets on it, actually I think only has one. Um, John's right in saying that we have been keeping them back, uh, in the backyard. My, my driveway, if you, I don't think you can see it from the street, I apologize to disagree with you. Maybe when the leaves are off, uh, my mom has a pretty good, healthy garden out there in the front yard. Um, and then there's a row of bushes. Um, I line those up so that you don't see them. And we have been trying to be more, um, aware of that lately, um, because of this, this, this happening. Um, I don't think we're an eyesore, um, with those. Can I thin the herd out with those? Yes, because I don't use them every day. I will tell you, I do not maintain employees for my company, I'm a small proprietor.
Let, let me sort of reframe my question a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Um, a, a private person having a personal vehicles, there's no limitations, no restrictions, not regulated, have as many cars as you want. When they become business vehicles that are there for your business, that's a different story. Business vehicles that are there for your business, um, and whether you think it's an employee or a, an independent contractor, you don't have any employees, they're all independent contractors. When somebody who isn't you shows up at your property in their personal vehicle and leaves it there and gets in one of your vehicles to go do whatever it is that you've asked them to do, that business activity is something that has an impact on your neighbors, that affects the way that we decide to approve these things. And whatever you call that person, we're gonna call them an employee because somebody parked a car there that isn't yours and took one of your vehicles and went out to do some work and at the end of the day, they brought your truck, van, minivan, car, F-one-fifty back and got back in their vehicle and left. And so, if you've got five of those vehicles there, there's a potential for five human beings who are not you to come to your site, leave their vehicle there, get in your vehicle and go do what, if it's snow plowing, if it's painting, if it's siding, whatever it is, that activity looks the same, um, in terms of its impact on the neighborhood, in terms of its commercial activity. So that's what I'm trying to get at and I know that you're getting frustrated that I've said employees and all of that stuff. I can tell you from my standpoint, I'm getting frustrated because you're splitting hairs and trying to prevaricate and define what is-is so that it doesn't sound like you're doing what you're doing. And what you're doing is that you got five vehicles there that are engaged in your business activity and you've, you've done as much as you can to avoid giving me a straight answer about that.
No, no, sir, I can assure you that those vehicles are not used every day for those business and.
Whether it's every day or once a month, it's still a commercial vehicle.
Let me just say one other thing, okay? Um, one other factor into this, and I'm not trying to split hairs here. This is an old home that I have been working on diligently for my mother for several years, okay? I have had several different, uh, contractors of different kinds come to the home that we have because it's a two-family. We've upgraded, we've approved the house, we've done a lot of work, which was permitted. Um, friends went to the house before, he's seen what we do. We're not trying to hide anything, I'm not trying to prevaricate. I've been in business for twenty-five years here in town. I painted the outside of this particular building we're sitting in. How can I try to split hairs there? Um, I've worked quite a bit in town. I'm a good, honest contractor, okay? If you're telling me you don't want me to have a Dodge minivan with, with, uh, magnetic plates on that I might take the magnets off, I might take to my dad's house, you know, in Florida, um, okay, okay, you don't want me to, I'm not gonna split hairs. I, I, we have a big parking area in the yard, um.
Thank you for offering the explanation and I don't mean to call into question your, your longstanding operation of your business or any of that kind of thing.
I'm here to comply with what you guys want me to do, that's all, I really, really honestly want to do that.
Here's what we need from you is.
Yes, sir.
When we're asking the questions or filling out the application, tell us what you're proposing and then we can vote on that. And when you're telling us something that, and then we ask you another question, say, oh, well, there really are five vehicles here and, well, they're not really employees, but they're independent contractors or they've got magnets on them and I get rid of, I don't know what that means. I mean, propose a thing that we can consider and discuss and when we ask questions about it, tell us what it is that you actually want to do and if we can approve it, we'll approve it for you. If we can't approve it, then we'll tell you that here's the limitation that says that we can't do that. But for us to do twenty questions just to get at the, what's happening on the ground is jamming us up here, we gotta get over that.
Okay. I, I, I just want to, uh, we're proposing to, uh, be occupa, to have the business there. I mean, uh, I don't need all these trucks to be there. Um, they're not trucks, they're vans, actually. Um, I had intentions of two thousand and seventeen to clean things up. Um, we've been trying to clean things up at this house for a very, very long time, sir.
The condition of the house, take care of your mom's house, it isn't a regular, regulated matter, do what you want with that. Um, we're just dealing with, can you run a painting contracting business out of, out of the place? And I can tell you without a doubt, um, answering the phone and faxing and doing your billing and collections and whatever office stuff that you do is fine and dandy, not, not even the slightest bit of an issue. The two things that, the things that are going to be issues are the things that are visible to your neighbors and it might impact them. So far, what we've identified on that list is the number of vehicles that you have that are in one way or another related to the business and the presence of a sign.
Parked, the vehicles parked visibly. Now, I know, I know the property, bear with me.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you drive down that street and you go in your driveway and there are five vehicles parked out behind your house, I'm not gonna see them. If they're parked along your driveway, even one or two of them with a sign, I will see them.
Mm-hmm.
That has a difference on, on what our decision is gonna be.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So that's, that's one of the things that we're addressing here. The sign is something else, let's not deal with that, but let's just deal with.
So I think we.
Now Lynn makes an excellent point on vehicles. We've had very many, uh, home occupations that have heavy equipment on trailers, a backhoe or a loader or something. And they have arranged for it to be parked behind the building or out of sight or, you know, somehow accommodated it so it isn't making the neighborhood look like a contractor's site. And so, if we can figure out a way to do that on your site, whether it's one, two, three, four or five vehicles, if it works, we're not gonna have a problem with that. But what I'm hearing is.
I'm sure we'll hear from, my neighbors are, are behind me. If, and if I thought that I was, uh, I mean, it's only one neighbor that doesn't talk to me. Everybody else, I have a very good communication with, I think. And, uh, if we need to do something, we'll do it, I've always tried to do that, we've been there ten years, so.
And I, this is making sense to me, Robert, I understand and we're looking for a clear, definitive things to make this work for everybody. Um, when we got this, uh, letter, uh, whatever we wanna call it, we really did take all the vehicles and including the ones that were parked up front, and put them behind the fence, um, behind the house so you wouldn't see them from the street. Aside from his vehicle that he works with every day, um, to and fro. So I don't think at any point in time are we trying to look for anything nutty. We, we wanna do the best we can, you know, be able to have Chris have his office in his home, not put any big signs out or anything crazy, just have something out front, let people know that he has a business. And we certainly want, uh, the neighbors and the neighborhood, you know, the people that surround him not to be upset at what's going on back there. If it involves him putting his five vehicles behind that section, we'd be happy to make amends to do that.
Is, is there any parking?
Yeah, it's a big, it's a pretty good size.
Is there any parking up front or is it just a driveway?
Oh man, we have been parking along the driveway.
Not what you have been doing, listen to my words. Is there any parking or is it just a driveway going up?
It's a driveway.
So.
It's not actually accurate, I'm sorry. It's, it's a driveway, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot driveway that goes straight to where the tenants park.
Yep.
And then it goes around in a circle around the big trees that you guys see. But to the right that you probably don't see is a very large area, it's a basketball court. It's a very large area of asphalt that's there, that was there previously because previously the driveway was moved, um, from that area to the other side. I wasn't, I didn't own the property then. Um, uh, Mr. Tupper could probably tell you a little better about that, what happened. But there's a large parking area back there that I.
When you say, when you say back there, when I drive by there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm like Bob, I drive by there all the time. I see this house, I see this house, I see a driveway that goes to a house way in the back.
That's correct.
And I see a driveway that goes in, but I don't see any parking along that driveway, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, and a lot of times, there's, I put a fence up, a lot of central park in, I have a.
I don't, I don't care about in back, I'm talking about in front.
Right, yeah, no, that's, that's.
The first hundred, the first football field.
I, I, and, and John, and.
I know you can pull it up on the, I know you can pull it up on the grass, but there is no parking spots along that drive on the initial entry.
Especially during winter season because it's harder to plow that into the grass.
There is no parking.
That's right.
Okay, that's all I was trying to clarify.
And we've ceased, desisted from any of that since we've known about this and tried to comply, yes, ma'am.
That's correct. And we, and like Chris said, there had, we had been parking.
I, I don't care about that.
There.
She wants to know what we're planning.
I just wanna know what's physically there and physically, there is no parking there.
That's correct.
So that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'm still having problem. Um, the problem I have is we have five vehicles, some of which only get used once or twice a month, say. But there's been mention of subcontractors. Now, I know he's saying no employees, but if you have a subcontractor comes onto the site with his own vehicle and then takes one of Chris's vehicles out, as far as I'm concerned, it, the definition of that in my mind is an employee because that subcontractor, who pays him? Do you pay the subcontractor or does the homeowner pay the subcontractor?
Doesn't matter. Well, in terms of our regulations, we don't necessarily get into that, but I think functionally, it is exactly the same as the reason for our regulations of employees are wanting to know how many people are coming to the site and I count those people as employees.
That's what I'm trying to do too, I'm afraid I'm counting them as employees.
Well, the, the, there's twelve different criteria that, in the state, I, I'm. Uh, I'm, you're a lawyer, so I can, I'm not gonna pretend to try to tell you, but there is twelve, twelve different criteria that determine whether someone is an employee or a subcontractor or not. And I can assure you that we meet that twelve criteria. You can hire a subcontractor legally, and I have checked with my attorney. And you can hire a subcontractor and he can lease a vehicle from you, or he can use a vehicle for you, from you. If he needs to use a vehicle because he needs to carry two-by-tens over to the job site across the street or go to the dump to dump what he was using that day, I've let my guys borrow it. If you, if you tell me that's not acceptable with you, then we will not do it again.
No, no, um, how you interact with your subcontractors um, and what advice your lawyer gives you on all of that isn't a matter that this board would weigh in on. What we weigh in on is what are you doing on your site? Um, and does, i- is it functioning? A- and when your subcontractor comes, if I'm your subcontractor and uh whatever it is that I'm in the trades, I show up at my, your site and I leave my F-one-fifty and I get in your F-one-fifty and drive away, there's functionally zero difference between that and me being your employee and showing up for work at nine o'clock and clocking in and grabbing your truck and going to work. And so from the site use standpoint, what's that?
I disagree with that because you're not understanding the terms of, this doesn't happen every day.
It's nothing to do with the terms of your agreement with these people. A- a- as, in, in terms of the activity on the site, there's a person who doesn't live there, who shows up for work in the morning, gets out of their vehicle, gets into your vehicle, and goes and does some work. Whether you call that person a, a maid, an au pair, a subcontractor, an employee, whatever you wanna call them, functionally, it's the same thing. You have an employee on your site for the purposes of our regulations.
So how would you prefer us to do that, uh, if we?
Well, first, tell me.
Know when I ate that portion of.
On a daily basis, how many of those exist?
Well, we're very slow in the wintertime, so um, we don't have a lot of. This was the busiest year I've had in a long time. Up until this year, and this, this, we're, we're changing things and we're here to do this this year. So I can't go on a basis of, it's always just been me and one other guy. And so this year, we've, I've needed some extra help, and we were with Home Advisor. We've had a lot of people want, that are moving into town that have needed our help, so I've tried to acquiesce the request.
Great, I'm glad that your business is growing.
Subs come in, they don't have a big enough truck to take everything they need over to the job.
No, that's fine. It doesn't matter to me why they wanna use your truck, it's fine. How many of them, i- in August, when you're as busy as you can get, how many of them show up on Tuesday in August?
Uh, that work directly for me, I mean, I could say.
No, 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 forget who they work for.
Give you an exact answer on that right now, but I would, not, not many. I mean, we're not talking about.
Chris, how many people show up at your property in the morning? Whether they work for you, or they're a sub, or they are cleaning your house.
Two or three people at any given time, and that's only in the hardest, that's only in the middle of.
So on, on the, on the high point of the season, maybe two or three people show up, park their vehicle in your yard, and take one of your vehicles and disappear.
Most contractors don't even have a driver's license anyway.
Chris, Chris!
I'm trying to give you a straight answer here, okay? There's not three people show up, drop off a truck, and take three trucks. You got a subcontractor, he might have two employees with him, and he get in my duly, and they go to go do a job.
How many vehicles, how many vehicles show up and remain in your yard?
One vehicle will show up with three guys in it, get in another vehicle and go do their job.
That was the answer we were looking for. Thank you. Okay.
But that's not on every single day.
No, I understand, but we're, we're looking, we're looking for uh some generalities here, so. You answered the question, that's good.
My, alright, my proposal, okay, so we can move forward. My proposal for two thousand and seventeen is this, okay? I'm not gonna maintain any employees. The mini, the big dual-wheel two thousand and one F-three-fifty and the big construction trailer, which is the biggest two pieces of equipment I have, are leaving within the next fifteen days to go to Florida. They're not gonna be here anymore, and they're not coming back. So those are gone. So now we've just taken two big pieces of equipment. No employees, no subcontractors or anybody's gonna be driving it. Um, now, I have a big van that's gonna stay here, that doesn't have magnets on it, you've seen it. It's the one we backed up, obviously, so, because we didn't have a sign. We had that parked out front, because people do see me. And I just wanna say one thing about, earlier you'd said, it's strictly advertising. Well, you know, I kinda like to brag to the fact that people know where I am because of the fact that a lot of contractors, you don't even know where they live. I like to say to people, well, you know, I live at seventy-eight Babu's Lake Road, yep, I know where you're at. It, it does give us a little bit more of a legitimacy.
I don't doubt that there's a business purpose for it.
I have plenty of work, I don't need to advertise anymore. I would like to have a nice, little, small sign, the size of a pizza, at the side of the road. I'll get rid of all the other trucks, you'll never see any more of my trucks. And a- anywhere near the front of the yard, if we can just have the business there. Um, if you tell me, if the neighbors are upset because there's more people there, obviously, that's just coming from somewhere. I'm sure you, you know, you've driven by, you drive by there every day. Everybody drives there every day. If you have kids in school, or you uh vote, um, I got a lot of advertising on Voting Day last year. Um, you know, you know where Chris Burke Painting is. Uh, so I just wanna uh say that I, I don't really um want this year to do things the way we're talking about them. Um, but we've been extremely busy up until Christmas. Um, we had a lot of closings, trying to get people into their homes, so we've been on a big push. Um, uh, that's gonna change. We have some other new accounts, um, and so that's gonna be changing. Um, so my proposal is, for this business is, is that. That we don't show the, we could take the magnets off of the minivan. We could take uh the magnets off of the big dual truck, which is gonna be leaving in a couple of weeks anyway. We can uh, um, what else we have? The, the Ford van's gonna stay in the back near the house. I keep things closer towards the house anyway, because we have expensive tools in there. And it's just, it's secure to keep it near the house, and I have a camera on them too, so.
It's out on display all summer long.
Everybody's seen it, I know, I know we've had a busy summer. We're supposed to talk about, I thought we were talking about what we're gonna do this year, so that's what I wanted.
We're, we're trying to figure what that is.
I'm trying to tell you.
I don't know. If I, if I could uh maybe make a request. Um, given the setbacks, we're, we're talking about the driveway area. Um, maybe we could somehow put in writing that we are not going to park his business vehicles in any of the entrance area of his. Area, okay? Um, once you get past that, when you get to the home itself, and again, it's, it's like a an acre and a half of land, okay? Once you get down to the home, he's got a circular driveway. Um, if you look to the right of the driveway next to the house, there is a fence. Um, we could take the vehicles that are commercial in nature and put them, and park them there. So if you're looking down the stretch, you will not see the Chris Burke vehicles. Um, as far as the vehicles that he uses every day, vehicles that his mother uses, um, we're, we're requesting that he can park anywhere he wants.
Yeah, you don't have to request that, you got that.
Okay.
Private vehicle, not even on our radar.
And then, uh, other than that, other than, you know, making a putting in writing, we are gonna take his vehicles, get them off the dri- the drive-in area.
Yeah, you're on the right track, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit more.
Any commercially related vehicles.
Any of the commercially related vehicles.
So do me a favor while we're here working, you got these plans that you haven't passed out yet. Before you pass them out, mark them to show me what you're talking about, where you plan to put vehicles. And while you guys are doing that, let's open up the floor for the public, are any butters who wish to weigh in? Let's hear from your neighbors and see what they have to say. Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? All right, there's a microphone over here that's available for you. And we've got the clipboard here that we want you to use to sign in on, so we got your name down. Thank you for coming.
My name is Robert Ketchy, I'm at eighty Babu's Lake.
Okay, so you are the next one down towards the center of town, or away from the center of town?
Away from the center of town.
Okay.
I'm the one out in front. I'm addressing the planning board tonight in regards to the business that currently being run out of seventy-eight Babu's Lake Road, which is zoned as residential. For many years now, Chris Burke has been using this property, which is zoned residential, as a place to start, run, and grow a business, without any care or concern for his neighbors around him. Now, once did he ever come to me and ask if this was okay, or if the business was disrupting our lives? For years, there's been daily noise related to this business, getting the equipment ready for the daily, the day ahead, constant slamming of van doors, engines running, ladders dropping onto ladder racks. Many cars and trucks entering and leaving, employees hanging out, or subcontractors, as you would say, uh, entering and leaving, and trailers being loaded. Besides those occurrences, there was also very heated and loud arguments with employees or subcontractors, with vulgar language, and in one occasion led to a taser being heard and the employee being kicked off the property and told never to come back again. Uh, another incident which happened this past summer was an argument which led to Chris Burke chasing another truck out of his driveway, while in his own trucks beating past my driveway. In my opinion and concern for my family and property value, this business needs to run someplace else. Not in an area where kids play outside, having to hear vulgar language or fights. I have concerns with the hired help, um, and their backgrounds, and if they have any criminal backgrounds. His business has gotten bigger and he is much busier. I am also concerned with chemical storage for his business and emergency procedures if there was a fire and any toxic fumes from burning chemicals stored in his sheds. Also for spills of chemicals and runoff into the river which is behind his house. Keep in mind, this business sits on an aquifer conservation district. With that in mind, will there be any monitoring wells for the groundwater? Is it required if it's gonna be a commercial business, or zoned commercial business? Is silt fencing required with hay bales to contain any paint spills or chemical spills and debris stored on-site that could blow into surrounding properties in woods? What type of buffer restrictions are there for private homes that are bu- business? Because if this is get approved, it'll be considered a business, correct? How will chemical waste be disposed of if there's anything left over from the job site of that day? Uh, how will spills be handled being on an aquifer, if there is any spills on his property? Will the fire and police departments be inspecting this property as time goes on, people forget? Uh, if this business is allowed to remain, it will only grow in size with advertising on social media like Facebook and Angie's List. The traffic in and out at times, at all times of the day, will get worse as he gets bigger. I'm tired of keeping my shades closed on that side of the house because his workers are right outside my window. Uh, tired of the noise from the crews preparing for the day ahead, and they do, they are very loud in the morning. Tired of the fights and how business dealings get out of hand. I'm sure Chris Burke, as a business owner, can see it's time to grow his business where other businesses grow, and not out of his home where he and his mom live. Thank you for your time.
Don't forget to, oh, did you write your name on the clipboard?
I know that you were here. My name is James Tupper, I live at seventy-six Babu's Lake Road. I, right out front, I don't want the business there. I really don't. I've gone through this about forty-five years ago with a neighbor in the same property. And it put me through, you know what? Lawsuits, I got into a physical fight with the guy, and it ju- it just got totally out of hand. But some of the statements that are being made here tonight by this gentleman is absolutely incorrect. He's not familiar with what's going on with the property. I have, I've been told by Chris personally, uh, about a building that contains some paints. From my understanding, the commitment in the town, not the commitment, but the ordinance in the town is five gallons. If you have five gallons of flammable fluid, it's a business of any kind. You, you're not in accordance with what's supposed to be done. But I had a lot of things written down, but I think by telling you that, when I moved here forty-nine years ago, my house was a little, was just a little, uh, barn. As you can see in a lot of your drive-by, I'm very proud, very proud of my property. I work at it very hard, I pay a lot of taxes for it, and I want it to stay that way. I don't want business, not just Chris, but any business. I don't want them there. And I've been told past, well, if you don't, if you can't stay up with progress, move. I don't wanna move. I wanna die here. That's all I have to say.
Can you sign in, sir?
Yeah, don't forget to sign in.
Nelson, can you lend him a pen?
So, Chris or Paul, um, both of the neighbors who've testified made either reference to sheds or some storage of paint on your property. Do you have sheds on your property?
Sure do.
Are they used to store your paint for your business?
Absolutely not.
Um, I know that you mentioned that you're having paint taken, you pick it up and you take it to the job site. What happens with what, whatever's left over?
I uh have paint that's left over that stays in the van, it stays in a van. And I don't use flammable paints. We use nothing but latex.
Yeah, there's not much around the world that stays this far below the stains.
Green products, um, we work for daycares and people that have homes. We work in residential homes for people, we're not using exotic products. Um, we were, uh, if we are gonna do something like that, it would be strictly a lot of, uh, nowadays you have to keep track of all that. We have records of everything we dump. In the Merrimack Dump, I have receipts, I have uh A-one disposal, we spend quite a bit of money on that. Um, we have, uh, I, I. I could say we need a little better communication. I do talk to Mr. Tupper quite a bit. I'm surprised that this hasn't been brought up to me previously. Um, we know that this is, we are a growing business, we know that. Um, but I should be able to write out emails, I should be able to do stuff out of the house.
Can you shed some light on why both of these gentlemen think that you have sheds with paint stored in them?
You can go look in the sheds right now. There's no paint in any of the sheds. I have a shed that has.
How many sheds are there?
There's two sheds that were originally on the property since day one. Uh, well, one of them's been brought over, it's, it's, uh, it's been moved over from the other side of the house. Um, it's completely legal, it's, it meets the requirements of the size. That's my motorcycle shed. It has a motorcycle in it, has camping gear in it. It's my personal area that I keep my fishing poles. There's no paint in there, okay? I've introduced him, he's walked through in my house, his sons have been in my house, I've invited him in. Um, my other neighbor on the other side has too. I mean, I try to be a good neighbor. He's asked me to have big eighteen-wheelers drive over my property so he can dump stuff on his property. I've acquiesced that request. That's being neglected to be talked to. My front neighbor, um, who I've never met, I've lived there ten years, he's never even uttered a word at me. Um, has yelled at my mother, she keeps bees. We suspect that he was part of killing some bees on us.
We're getting a little bit too far afield here, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to keep.
One shed's a motorcycle shed.
That's, that's my statement, there's no paint in any sheds. We've been cleaning up big time back there.
The other shed has got tractors in it and garden supplies. Um, you know, out, outdoor yard tools and things of that nature, primarily for his mother's use.
My mom's on the garden club for the Merrimack, for Merrimack and stuff. I, if you saw what we pulled out of that house when I first bought it, we cleaned up quite a bit, so we, there's no paint.
So, uh, both of your neighbors seem to describe a whole lot of activity involving employees and, and movement, subcontractors, call them what you will, conversations with them, maybe arguments with them. Um, uh, comment on that, or, or let me know what your view is on that stuff.
I'd like to see any police report there is on any of this, or any complaints.
It doesn't mean that it doesn't exist because somebody called the police.
I, 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 I don't know what my guys are yelling at. There's been a couple of arguments in my yard, yeah, but we haven't had a whole lot of activity going on there for quite some time because we're changing the business. Um, and uh, we have a tenant that's gonna be mov- that just moved in now. Um, we didn't have a tenant for the longest time because we've been working on the house. There's a lot of workers that have been there trying to get the house done. We're almost done with it. There's not gonna be that many people there anymore. We've had a lot of people work on the house.
So you're not living there?
No, we're working there, it's the, we live there. It's a two-family.
Okay, so you've got, there's a two-family, are you living in one of the units?
Yes, I am, on the far left of the house, yes, ma'am.
And the other side is?
A tenant.
It's been vacant, um, for quite some time now. But we've just gotten a tenant in there now, really nice girl moved in. And um, we cleaned a lot of this up. You guys, I wish I had before and after pictures of what it looked like. You really can't see the property from the street, because it sits two hundred and fifty feet. You really can't see the property from the street, because it sits 250 feet back. We have cleaned up quite a bit. So yes, but I, it's taken 10 years to do that.
I, I, I just want to be clear. Taking care of an old house and rehabbing it, or a place that's been beat up, or whatever, is all perfectly within your rights. It doesn't trouble us a bit. I'm glad that you're doing it, but it wouldn't trouble me if you didn't. You've got no obligation to us to do that stuff. What we're dealing with is exclusively the operation of Chris Burke Painting Company on this property, and the activities that are associated specifically with it, okay? So I'm happy that you're taking care of the house. I think it's great, but it really have anything to do with what we're dealing with here.
If my neighbors had mentioned this to me anytime before tonight, you would never see another person on the property before 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock? We said 9 to 5. If they'd been there at 7. If I had known that it bothered him, I would have taken care of it. I had a dog that barked too much a few years ago. They wrote, they wrote me a letter. I got rid of the dog. I, this, if this is a problem, we'll deal with it. We won't have another person on the property. That's fine.
I think your neighbor has a...
I have a tenant now.
Hang on one second. Please, sir.
Again, my name is James Tupper, 76 Babusak Lake Road. Chris, you're making some statements here, and so I'm going to...
No, 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 sir. Address us.
He's making statements here that are just absolutely not right, and I can sit there just alone and listen to it. He had all the opportunity to come and tell me what he wanted to do. It wasn't my obligation to go ask him what he's going to do, number one. As far as your partners in this place, he's got three, not two, but he's got three. He's sitting here lying to you. He's got a building on back with one of these sheds. He put a second floor on it. Did he pull a permit? No. That's all I need to say. The man does what he wants to do when he feels like he's going to do it. Somebody's got to stand up here. It's going to create a friction with my family and his family, I'm sure. But he can't keep going on like this. My house was the barn that went to his house, so don't talk about it has to take 10 years to clean something up. If you put your mind to something, you want something neat and clean and presentable.
I understand, and as I mentioned him, what he's cleaning up, whatever, isn't an issue for us.
I'm not going to let him sit here and say these things, he's lying. The man is lying.
Thank you, Mr. Tupper. With that, I'm going to actually close the public hearing, so that we're limiting the direction of where we're going with the conversation. Nelson, please.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I have, everything I've heard tonight says we're, we're looking at a non-conforming use in the neighborhood. I think we're looking at a contractor's yard. The way this property's being used, the way it's been used, and I don't know about the future, that's vague to me, but from the past and the testimony we've received, all I see is a contractor's yard, the same kind of things that would go on in a contractor's yard. They're not compatible with a residential use, and they shouldn't be in the residential zone. The same thing goes for the sign, Mr. Chairman. The sign has nothing to do, well, it doesn't have nothing to do. It has to do with his business, but it's promoting his business, but he's doing it in a residential area, which is not allowed by the ordinance. And variance or no, I would say, I would not approve a plan that had a sign like that on it. And I don't think we can approve anything here unless we have a clear definition of what he's asking for, and he gets a variance for it, to put a contractor's yard in the residential zone. That's what I'm taking away from what I've heard today. Thank you.
I would like to say, you couldn't have said it, but you couldn't have expressed my feelings any better, Nelson. Thank you. I totally support your saying. This, I don't think we've had a full and factual recollect, a report of what's going to happen, what has happened. I hate to use the word, but I don't believe a word I've heard this evening. I don't believe any of it. And I cannot, I mean, if you put it to the vote now, I'll be voting no. It isn't, to my mind, a home occupation. It is a contractor's yard.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Period.
Are the members of the board? What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny this home occupation, and instruct Mr. Burke that he cannot run a business in a resi, this business in a residential area.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed, two opposed? Any abstaining? 4 to 0, the motion passes. The home occupation request is denied.
Could we therefore, could I make another suggestion to Mr. Burke? That he goes away and thinks about the situation, and I know he's got an enforcement order against him, which I'm sure we could, agreed could be stayed. He comes forward with an intelligent proposition of how he wants to run his business, what he thinks he's going to do with this house, how he's going to continue to operate his business without conflicting the ordinances that this town has. And if he needs a copy of the ordinances, I'm sure Robert and the team in the community development will help him, but quite honestly, you're not going to get anywhere, at least with me, on the line you're taking now.
I take it that the applicant is so instructed. If there's no other discussion on this matter, let's move on with our agenda.
Sorry, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Item five on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of Not necessarily an agendas item, but I've had conversations with each of you to share some tough news about Jeff. And I certainly want to acknowledge his fantastic service to the board and his good friendship, and I don't know if anyone else wants to offer some words. I certainly think that he will be missed, and sad just to think about it.
I, I thought I was the elderly person on this board.
No.
I was amazed.
No.
Well, you're, you're, you're very wrong, because I mean, I'm, you know, Nelson and I also have the same sort of vintage, with great respect, and thank you for the thought, but...
Nelson is an alternate.
Well, so was Jeff. But I mean, Jeff and I, Jeff is the same age as I am.
I was, I was amazed at his age.
I wouldn't, I, I, I don't know his age, but I guess I'd be surprised.
He was 75. Just become 75.
He didn't strike me that way. He didn't strike me that age.
Just a boy.
Anyway, maybe we'll all have a chance to go have a beer a little bit later, but Jeff was a good guy and a friend, and...
You got to go, that's the way to go.
A good, good in service to the town. Thankful for that. I know Alastair has been able to make some arrangements to send a read.
Yeah, I'm sending, I've got a floral arrangement on behalf of the board and community development organized, and obviously, there's a separate one, but it's from myself and my partner, because we were close friends for many years.
Does anyone else want to say anything else regarding Jeff?
And thank you, by the way, for getting in touch with the town, town manager.
Well, just I'd second all that you've said, and I'd be willing to make a contribution toward the, toward the memorial, whatever it is. His wake is on Fri, on Saturday.
The wake is on Saturday from 9 till 12. There is a service of remembrance of, whatever they call it, immediately following, and then Jeff's body will be put in deep freeze, or whatever they do. He is being, he's not being cremated, he's being, it will be in whatever the way they do it, and it'll be taken, taken back to Herkeman up in New, up in part of New York State, as and when they can get a hold in the ground. He has a family vaults up there.
Herkeman, New York. Yeah. If there's no other thoughts or comments with respect to Jeff, the only other discussion item that I have has no coincidence to Jeff's, but an individual has come forward to ask to be appointed as an alternate member to the board to fill one of the vacancies that we've had, and there's a appointments committee interview scheduled for Thursday. I've never met the fellow, so I'll find out some more about him when I meet with him there. He did express interest by inquiring on the website to me, and I said, you know, "Great, come talk to people, go meet him," and he's kind of taken it from there. So, there may be some news about a potential new individual who may be a part of the board. The appointments committee agenda has already been published, so the fellow's name isn't a particular secret. It's McLaughlin, Paul McLaughlin, is that his first name?
And his work for me.
So, I don't have any other items of announcement.
He volunteered to help with the elections and the check-ins, and was one of a number of people, just Joe Q. Public, who stepped up and said, "I'd be willing to help."
Yep.
So I give him credit for that.
Absolutely.
Just a reminder, on this Thursday, the 5th of January, there will be a public hearing on the ATP-funded trail building, the trail that has been approved for going between Watson Park and the Sohegan River Bridge crossing. And there's a public hearing on that subject coming this Thursday. And there's two...
When and where?
It'll be right here in this room, and there's two hearings. The one preceding it is, has to do with the removal of an historic bridge, which is a bridge of buttments. There's no more bridge, but there's a...
A bridge of buttlets.
Of buttments, yeah, which are north or upstream from the Babusak Lake, Babusak Brook Crossing that's being proposed for Bedford Road. So, upstream from the Bedford Road Bridge, there's a, there's a public hearing on the removal of those buttments. They impede the flow of water during high times, during high water times, and so they want to remove them, but they have to go through a process. That precedes it, at 6 o'clock, at 7 o'clock is the hearing that I just spoke of on the trail, showing alternatives to the proposed trail. There's supposed to be three alternatives presented for public review.
Thank you, Nelson.
Public is invited and encouraged, and it's in this room.
Thank you, Nelson. Any other items of concern that anybody wants to raise? With that, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of December 20th, 2016.
Is that move the approval as printed?
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
It's a motion to approve and seconded to approve as printed the minutes of December 20th.
Oh, wait, I've got, I've got one more.
No, you don't.
Yes, I did. I did. I did.
Three and a half pages.
It was very compact.
Although, as it turns out, the fourth page is marked at page four of three.
Wait, hold it. Nelson's still chewing?
Nelson.
What do you got, man?
Go get your beer.
Alright.
Okay, here it is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here it is, on page one of those minutes, line number 38. We said, 37 says, "Library sprinkler system desirable, new library deferable, new library athletic fields deferable." I think those are just the athletic field improvements, and not, nothing to do with the library.
The library's going to give out athletic fields?
Well, that's what it looks like from these minutes.
Can if they want, but they, no.
They could try.
So that, "New athletic fields deferable."
Yeah.
Just delete the second, the second instance of "library" on line 38.
Yeah, just, just delete the words "new library" on line 38.
Just, just "library," "new athletic fields" is fine. Correct, or is it? Okay, alright. With that, we done?
Done.
All in favor of approving the minutes of December 20th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?